Yeah.
Costa?
Yes.
And Ms. Capiscus?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Leclerc is absent this evening.
Next I'll make a motion to seal the closed session minutes of February 28, 2024. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Ms. Capiscus?
Yes.
You please all stand for a moment of silence and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I believe this evening we have a presentation from the Pothier Citizens Elementary Campus, and I'll ask, uh, Ms. Cavallo to please come to the mic and begin the presentation.
Oh, some to watch?
It's a... Oh, okay.
There you go. Oh, there it is. Yes.
Just meet a perfect diamond.
Everybody down? Yep. Thank you. So, we're going to, um, be fortunate enough to have two students, Elena and, um, oh my goodness, Tracy. It's been a long day, I'm sorry. Tell you a little bit about some of the things we've been doing on campus, more specifically at Citizens to combat bullying and, uh, bring a culture of kindness and understanding to our campus. So they're gonna talk about some of the, um, things we've done with students, and then we'll finish up with the different, um, bullying topics that we work on throughout the year. We have Elena, uh, Tracy up first.
This month, we got to visit our Buddy Classrooms at Pothier. We did this to work on developing our friendships across the campus. My class went to a primary self-contained classroom. We talked about how to make new friends and be kind to each other. After watching a video about snowflakes and kindness, after we talked about ways to make new relationships, we put, we wrote one of the ways on a snowflake. Then we decorated them and put them on trees, on kindness trees in both buildings. We got to meet new friends, and it was very exciting because I felt like a small kid again by visiting Pothier. And we are looking forward to meeting up with our buddies again next month.
Yep, just coming.
On this side, there are some students' reflections on what we have learned so far in Second Step. Another one of the great things we do on campus is Student of the Month. Each, each month, our teachers pick one student in our classrooms that meet the social-emotional theme that we are learning about in Second Step. I was chosen last month because I showed great integrity. When you're a Student of the Month, you get a certificate and fine dining. This means you get to eat on sta- on a stage in the cafeteria on a table that has special decorations. People in your class also congratulate you and are happy for you.
They did such a nice job, didn't they? So to get to this place, it took a village. Um, we started this work a few years ago on campus. Bullying is a word that's thrown around quite often, and we did a lot of work on how we could teach the students, if there is peer conflict, how to work through it in an appropriate way. And we started this year, we did an entire event around SEL with the parents. So we had stations, and one of the stations the parents were able to go to was what is bullying, what is peer conflict, and how you can tell the difference. And it was eye-opening. So now we don't have parents calling us saying, "My child's being bullied." They more understand some of it is just children being children and kind of learning their way and disagreeing. But we also have students that now have the language and the ability to talk through their problems. An example happened today. A girl was walking down the hall, stopped the social worker, and said, "I was just very angry, and I was angry because, and this is how I handled it, and these are some of the things I did to, um, get out of that bad mood." So they are learning and, um, coping better with their behaviors. The other, um, areas we did at the event were, um, about cyberbullying, so online safety, because we see that more and more. Uh, we have, um, we had somebody do the academic teaming, Meg Feeney, who's our innovation specialist. We went over Second Step, the new SEL program, so that the parents could see their piece that they get shared every single week from the classrooms, so they can have those same conversations and use the same language on the skills the kids are learning. Um, and we talked about SOAR, which is our, um, district-wide behavior program. And I think putting in all this work last year and this year, we have to turn into Dr. McGee how many bullying reports we had that were substantiated. And this year, so far, from September to December, we only had one. So I think everybody, um, changing their mindset, the parents working together with the teachers and with the students, and the work we're doing with the students has changed, um, how we operate when, you know, students are having a disagreement and how they handle it. Um, we also, as the girls talked about, we do, um, with the social workers, we have lunch bunches, breakfast buddy, social skills groups, and then our great new partnership with the Buddy Classrooms.
So, at the beginning of the year...
Oh.
Down. There it is. Um, we submitted our plan throughout, that we were gonna follow throughout the year of the different activities that we are going to do across campus to help children understand what bullying is versus peer conflict and develop more kindness and, um, unity across campus. So as you can see, the red check marks denote all of the things that we've already done on campus, that the kids have participated in, and we've definitely seen, you know, an increase of the kids just being more aware of their, more self-aware of how they're feeling and being able to talk things out together.
And we have a different theme every month that we, um, the Buddy Classrooms come together, and the older students work with the younger students to talk about how they can make friends or recognize when there's an issue and how to talk to their friends, how to say "I'm sorry" and things like that. And they'll be doing projects throughout the year with their buddies. And, um, we hope this keeps going because the kids love it, and they're teaching and learning from one another. So it's better than listening to the adults, because they don't always want to listen to us anyway. But when they hear it from peers, it goes a lot further. And I think we did, there's a few up there that have numbers next to them, not checkmarks. Those are things we decided as we moved along that weren't gonna fit in, and we did things differently, um, because it's, it's, you know, a, a living document, and we have to kind of read the, the kids and the teachers and what's going on in the building. So sometimes we switch it up. But, um, every month, it's a focus in our building this year. It's in both buildings. You hear, hear it and see it and feel it all day, every day. And I think making that a priority has changed the culture and climate at Pothier Citizens. And that's, we have...
And the girls have a present.
The girls have a present for you. They'll be passing out. Thank you for your time. And the people on stage.
Good job. Thank you. You so much.
They're made for little ones. God, I got little wrists. Again, I want to take the opportunity to thank Ms. Cavallo and her staff, and especially the two students for a great presentation this evening. Great job. Next, we'll go into good and welfare. For anyone addressing the school committee during good and welfare, please begin with your name and your address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during good and welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. Does anybody want to approach the podium to speak to the school committee this evening?
William Doe, 164 Woodhaven Road. I read in the, uh, Valley Breeze that Wensocket is gonna be, uh, forced to take on more students at RISE. If North Smithfield can drop their students from RISE to save money on their budget, why can't we drop our students from RISE to save our school budget? I think that, uh, if the state is gonna make us take more students, then the state better pay for them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the school committee? Next, we'll go into recognitions and announcements. Mr. Perrier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wensocket Area Career and Technical Center recently partnered with C.C.R.I. to create a 10th grade math intervention for our 10th grade P.Tech students because so many of our P.Tech students were not participating in college courses. C.C.R.I. came and offered the Accuplacer Math Test to gain a baseline of where the students were at. Only four students tested at the high school level, and the remainder of students tested into the college level, with some even going into calculus and pre-calculus. Remember that these students are only in 10th grade, so that's very impressive. Uh, these students will also take college courses over the summer. We are also proud of these students, and we look forward to hearing more about their great accomplishments in the near future.
At this time, I'd like to, uh, direct, uh, director, uh, ask Director Catherine Rickett to come up to the stage, and the school committee to stand forward, and please introduce your students, and we'll congratulate them, and you can award them the certificates.
Guys, I just want to say thank you again for having us here tonight. These children have really accomplished something, um, very significant, and we're so, so proud of them. Uh, to be in 10th grade and to obtain such high math scores is so incredibly wonderful. And we're very, very proud of you all. Thank you. Okay, bring to the stage Jake Turner. Tucker, I'm sorry, excuse me. Uh, I need to put my glasses on, forgive me, guys. Jake Tucker, I see the... Thank you. Thank you, Jake. That's okay. Thank you. And we have Caleb Andre. Yep, okay, yeah. Caleb, come this way, okay?
Good job, Caleb.
Thank you.
Here you go, Caleb, thank you. Great job. And we have Katrina May Fitzner? Katrina? Thank you. Here you go, sweetheart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we have Logan Dugway. Am I saying it right? Logan is not here this evening. Okay, thank you. All right. John Carlo Panida. Here you go. Thank you. Next, we have Benjamin Fowler. Miguel Herrera. Thank you so much. There you go. Nice job, Miguel. We have Timothy Silva. I should note that Timothy is our highest-scoring student. He scored well into calculus level in the eighth, in the 10th grade. It's incredible.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have Leonardo Rivera.
Stay still for a minute so mom can take a picture.
You come closer. Great job.
Does anybody... Yes.
Thank you all.
I'll make one tomorrow. Tell them. Tell them we'll give them one tomorrow. Oh, you and Brian should be in here. That's right. Jakey, go. Everybody squeeze in. An extra folder or two. Piece of paper in it that just says "I owe you." Oh, that's even good. That's better. That was very nice.
That was very nice.
Again, great job, guys. Excellent. Unbelievable. Yes, I wonder who. Um, on, um, February 16th, there was a great show that was held at Wensocket High School called Love Always: The Alumni Show. And the cast consisted of alumni, children of alumni, and Wensocket High School teachers. This was a fantastic show. The place was mobbed. And we want to congratulate every single one of, one that, all the, that, who performed in this show. I know Mr. Burke would have loved to have been on stage. But it was a great show. It was well-attended. I can't wait for the next one. And I guess the next show we're gonna see, coming in April, 25th, 26th, 27th, is Beauty and the Beast. So that is gonna be phenomenal. So hopefully, all of us here and everyone out there on, in radio land, uh, will get tickets and attend this show. This should be phenomenal, because Ms. Maello, oh, has been putting on phenomenal shows for years, and I'm sure this one is gonna be no different. Now I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, we'll go into the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the February 14, 2024 closed meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Mr. Perrier, roll call, please.
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Capiscus?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the February 14th, 2024 open meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Ms. Capiscus?
Yes.
Next, we'll go to the consent agenda, and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Does anyone want to take any item out of the consent, the consent agenda for discussion? Mr. Perrier?
Chairman Borger?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Ms. Capiscus?
Yes.
Next, I'll ask Mr. Cusson to give us his student representative report.
Thank you, Chairman. Due to February vacation, it's a bit of a short report tonight, but nonetheless, I wanted to call attention to our boys' basketball team at the high school. Uh, they had their senior night on February 15th, the week before vacation, and like the alumni show, it was an absolutely packed house. Uh, there was performances throughout from the girls' basketball cheer team, and the color guard also performed during halftime. Uh, overall, it was an exciting night for the team, filled with lots of support for our senior boys' basketball players. Next up, I wanted to note that the electronic passes that will be replacing our regular paper passes at the high school. So we're starting the process of replacing them and rolling them out. Recently, we had a training during this past week's advisory, and so far, it seems like a pretty simple process. I've heard mixed reviews from students, but nothing too alarming. And hopefully, it'll prove to be... Hopefully, it'll prove to be, sorry, I'm blinking, beneficial for everyone in the long run. So, thank you. That concludes my report.
Any questions for him? Any comments? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the student representative report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, I'll ask Mr. Perrier to give us a report, since the superintendent is not here.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, for the staffing report for the school committee meeting, uh, we are kind of getting into the home stretch of the school year, so the hiring has slowed down, uh, as we kind of close out the school year. Uh, for this, this past couple of weeks, we have brought onboard a sped inclusion teacher under the certified staffing positions. And then, uh, on the non-certified side, we've hired a technology specialist, a certified occupational therapist assistant, and also a TA. Um, on the, uh, substitute, I would like to draw some attention to the substitutes that we've been hiring. Um, I think the increase in pay has really resulted in us getting, attracting more substitutes to the district, and, uh, I think it's really been working out well. So, um, we look forward to continuing, and we're still getting subs in now as we speak. So, uh, I think that was a, a great decision, and I think it's, hopefully, we're gonna set this up to pay some dividends over the long run.
Hopefully, I will continue to bring in substitutes, as you say. I think the money has made a big change. Uh, certainly, uh, the appetite to come to Wensocket has increased, has improved, and I will hope that this, this whole, uh, process will continue. Any other questions for Mr. Perrier? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the, uh, Mr. Perrier's report. Do we have, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain for the record, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Capiscus. Uh, we have no subcommittee reports this evening, but I'll ask Mr. Perrier to give us his financial update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in front of the school committee this evening is the December 2023 fiscal update. Uh, the district is currently projecting a $194,000 surplus at this time, as of June 30th. Onto the financial highlights. On the revenue side, when the state budget was finalized in June, state aid for fiscal year '24 was increased over $961,000 over what was originally anticipated. Medicaid reimbursement per this projec- per this projection is targeted to be $444,000 under budget. Uh, this is, uh, an extremely conservative outlook. We like to be conservative when we estimate revenues. Uh, we will continue to monitor this, and as we get more concrete information, we may end up increasing that projection. Even with that in, uh, even with that happening, uh, we are still on track to reach our total revenue number for the fiscal year. On the expenditure side, all regular salaries are $244,000 under budget at this time, and when netted with the employee turnover allowance of 1.240 million, this will put overall salaries $996,000 over budget. Uh, we've seen this number come down as the year, as the months have ticked off, because, uh, we've had vacancies, we run every year. So, uh, we'll continue to monitor this as we go to the end of the year, but I would foresee this continuing to drop as we get closer to June. Uh, substitute salaries line is $173,000 under budget at this time. And, and as I mentioned during the earlier report, uh, the subs will be charged to SER III, so we're gonna have a savings on the general fund for subs for this year. Medical expenses are currently $649,000 over budget. This is still only a mid-year projection. It really takes very little time for this number to get off track. Um, we'll continue to monitor it and keep an eye on it as we could progress through the year. The district has contracted with outside services to bring in additional support staff for the district. In particular, many CNAs have been hired to assist in the classroom. Uh, the district is continuing to try and hire for these vacant positions as well. Most CNA expenses have been moved to SER III for this year. Uh, additional funds have been allocated to transportation to cover the higher-than-expected ride transportation billings. Uh, district will continue... District will continue to monitor these expenses going forward. At this time, property and equipment purchases have been allowed to go through the general fund. Most of these projects will be getting a reimbursement for between 92 to 100%. And this reimbursement will then be used to fund our capital plan for the five-year plan that we've put together. And that will conclude my report, and if anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them now.
Any questions or comments? Thank you for your report, Mr. Perrier. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a financial update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Morale, would you give us your special education report?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in front of you, you have a special education update. I would like to highlight that the early childhood team was awarded the comprehension, comprehension literacy and state development grant, which we refer to as a CLSD grant for birth through pre-K. With this grant, later on in April, we will be talking with the curriculum, subcommittee about the curriculum that this is able to purchase for our pre-K students and the supports that this is able to provide. Our early childhood team is also creating a community newsletter that will be shared monthly starting in April. We're doing this in hopes to attract more pre-K students to our pre-K programs. We are still in need of filling some seats, so we're hoping that with the pre-K newsletter going out, it'll bring attention to our pre-K appotheer, which is free, to help support the classrooms and also give some tips and tricks to parents at home. We're in the midst of our school support visit. They've completed our file review. We have a meeting next week to go over their findings as well as our survey that went out. And then the week of March 18th, they will be coming into our schools ride to do observations and interviews with teachers and students. As far as vacancies, as Mr. Perrier had mentioned, we were able to hire seven more TAs since the last time we reported out. So our vacancies for TAs have gone down, which is great. The vacancies for TAs are spread out across the district, so it's not just in one building. So we're able to cover some of those vacancies with other support staff, but it's looking good that we're starting to close the gap in that area. When you take a look at the special education enrollment numbers, right now, as of February 21st, 2024, we have a total of 1,446 students receiving special education services within our schools from pre-K to grade 12. This represents 26.7%. It's a slight increase from the last time I reported out. It makes sense. It's the time of year where our evaluations and referrals have come in after first trimester, and students are starting to become eligible for special education services. We've also had an increase of students moving into our district that required supports. Our population at the time is approximately 5,415 students. We have 19 students in our transpro classroom. We had four students that have graduated or aged out of the program. We also have 117 students in our out-of-district placements. 108 of them have IEPs. We also have 177 students in private schools and our pre-K programs that are out in the community that we also provide services to. When we take a look at all of our students out in the community, as well as our students in our schools, it brings us to 30.6% of our population receiving special education services of some sort. If you have any other questions, I am happy to answer them.
I do have one. I just want to make sure I understand. The students, the 19, 117, 177 students that are not in our system, when you calculate your 30.6%, right? Do you just add 19, 117, 170 to the 1,400 number and divide by 5,415? Or do you increase the 5,415 for these? So the percentage would be somewhat lower.
Yeah, so what I do is I take the total population of what's, of all of our students in our school, and we take those numbers, the 19, 117, and the 177, I add those together. And then I take the number of IEPs that are in our buildings, and then I add the 19, the 108, because out of the 117 students that are out of district, only 108 of them have IEPs. And then I add the 177, and then I divide that together, and that gives me the percentage.
So you add the number of IEPs to the total 5,5,415?
No, I, I add all the total of IEPs together, and I divide that number by the total population altogether.
Okay, maybe I have to sit with you because I just can't visualize, because I, I came up with different numbers, but that's why we need, I just want to know, have a better idea. Now, these students that are not in our system, we are responsible for them. If they have an IEP, how's this work?
Yes, we are. So the students that are in the out-of-district placements, we have to pay for those placements. And we also have to facilitate their IEPs annually and make sure that they are being educated and they're making progress on their IEP goals and objectives. The students that are in the private schools in pre-K programs, we are physically going to those programs and servicing them and resource support, occupational therapy, and speech language. And then our 19 students that are in our transpro program, that is in our school, but it's a transition out of high school into adulthood, so that number, that 19 students is not calculated into our building from pre-K to 12.
Okay, all right. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
I just have an observation that your timing is off because you asked a math question, which you should have asked to the students that were here earlier.
Yes.
Other than that, Vice Chair Burke, anything else?
No, I'm all set.
I'll make a motion then to, to, to receive and place and file the special education update. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unfinished business. We had one item that was tabled at last meeting, so I will make a motion to remove from the table a discussion approval on the agreement between WED and the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank Energy Asset Management System Program. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier roll call please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next I'll make a motion. Now that it's, it's before us, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the agreement between WED and the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank Energy Asset Management Program. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. Mr. Perrier please.
So in front of you this evening, I had a little brain fart. I didn't know which role I was doing here for a minute.
You're introducing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I didn't know I had a hat on.
We have to table it again.
Yeah. No, we're ready to talk about this. We, we had, we had some legalese we needed to work through on this last contract, this last run. It's the same contract that you have in front of us. We just need a clarification on a particular part of that contract. This is a really exciting opportunity. This is a opportunity that's come to us, the Wensacat Education Department, with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. We're, we're gonna, upon execution of this agreement, the infrastructure bank is going to come in and do an audit of our HVAC systems across the district, and then they're going to give us a lot of money to make upgrades to these districts, across the district. So we're looking, we're looking at a lot of this work to be done for free. That's how it's been processed, or that's how it's been presented to me. But you know, as we get into this and you know, we get some more details, I'll certainly report them back to the school committee. But, but this certainly looks like an exciting, exciting opportunity, and one that I think we should definitely take advantage of.
That's great. That's great. Any, any questions, comments? Mr. Perrier roll call please.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
And Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the student activities account policy for second packet passage. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any additional comments, questions?
Nope, same thing.
Mr. Perrier.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the acceptable payment policy for second passage. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any further questions? Mr. Perrier.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, we have a vote for the Supreme Dennis recommendation not to renew certain probationary teachers. Mr. Perrier roll call.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next I'll make a motion to discuss and approve amendments to the 2023, 2024 school year calendar. Do we have a second?
Second.
Just to identify what's, what's being done, we had two days that we would have had, right now, originally the end of school year would have been June 14th. We added two days, we had, we would have had to add two days to the calendar because of inclement weather. Then we removed one day off for voting on April 2nd because we're not going to have to close the schools down because the board of canvases will only need to use Savoy School and not the whole district. So we saved one there. So we need to add one day to the school year, which the last day will be June 17th. Now, June 17th, let's remember, this is tentative because we don't know what the weather's going to bear in the next couple of months. Because March, we have, we're not through March yet. So that's, those are the changes, the proposed changes to the calendar. Any discussion? Mr. Perrier.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next I'd like to make a motion to move item number four ahead of number three. Because they're approving, number four is to discuss and approve the school committee meeting calendar. And number three is to approve the entire school year calendar, which includes the school committee meeting. So I think we should vote on approving the school committee calendar before we approve the calendar.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to move that item ahead of number three. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I only, I just say the same thing I say every year. We're voting on a calendar for a committee that isn't seated yet. It just seems weird to me, but I realize we have to do it to do the school calendar.
We do, because we're the only ones sitting here. I mean, the new committee, say we're not even here, they wouldn't know what to do. They wouldn't have, they would have to start all over again. We don't want to do that to those poor folks, do we?
Let me think about.
No, we don't. Mr. Perrier.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the 2025 Wensacat School Committee Annual Meeting Calendar. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa.
We didn't do that vote right, on number three.
Why?
We motioned to take it out of order.
I did.
Yep, you first, Amy second, but then we never discussed or approved the calendar itself. So you need a motion.
All right, so moved. We'll, we'll move, that's right. So I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 Wensacat School Annual Meeting Calendar. Do we have a second?
Thanks, Kim. Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Any questions, comments? And I take Mrs. Kepiscus's comments to heart. Mr. Perrier.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the 2024, 25 school year calendar. Do we have a, a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Do we have any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Just so we know, that this calendar that's being proposed, that we're approving, is the RIDE calendar.
Correct.
That all those districts in the state.
Are going to be.
No?
No?
Was it changed with it?
The 24, 25 school year calendar, it's recommended.
Rec.
We're not copying the RIDE.
Yeah, it's, it's absolute.
Copying it. I thought I looked at it.
Well, you don't have to follow it. It's a recommended kind of guide. That's, that's what it is.
We are following it though.
I'm, I'm, I can't, I'm not sure.
I can, if you like, me too.
Yep.
We're not following it to the book.
Okay.
Okay, so like our first day is different from.
My bad.
Rhode Island, okay, but we are following the same days off for holidays and vacation.
Okay.
Okay. I'm good. My bad. I thought.
No, that's fine. Anyone else?
I was looking at it the other day, so.
Kepiscus.
I just have one question. I forget what they call it. Spring recess is the week of the 14th to the 18th, but it's actually the 14th to the 17th because the 18th is Good Friday. Does that present a contractual problem? Because the teachers get the five days, I'm sorry, get the five days of spring recess and then Good Friday. They're getting cheated out of a day?
It's based on how many days are in the school year. That's how the teachers are paid.
So it doesn't matter that it's.
Doesn't, no, it has nothing, no, nothing to do with the holidays. It's, the teachers per DM is determined by the 187 school days, and that's how we get to it. So you have the 185 school days and then two more. One is for conferences. Actually 188, I'm short one. I'm sorry. 183, where'd I, where'd I get that from, huh? 183, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
183 is.
You have 180 school days, you have one day for conferences, you have one day for your, go ahead.
So we have 183 days in the contract. 180 are with students. Two half-days equal the one conference day. Then we have orientation and PD day. Those equal our extra three. It's a total of 183 days for teachers, 180 for students.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I understand.
No, you okay? We okay?
Yep, thank you.
It's a team effort. That's it.
Mr. Perrier.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next I make a motion to discuss and approve the amendments to the Family and Medical Leave Act policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. I guess they're very minor changes to this policy. Do we need to discuss, go through this?
Mr. Chair, that didn't come before.
No, that did not. No, it did not. I guess it had to come straight to the committee.
Yes. That's what I was told when I inquired. I was told there were changes to the state law, and these were incorporated into the policies. Is that correct Caroline? You know?
Sarah, Sarah had mentioned that we needed to get this done.
Family medical leave, the changes to the policy. It didn't come before a policy.
It did. It did. No, it did. It did come from Sarah.
It was redlining.
We've, we've corrected, we've corrected one term by adding the words Rhode Island, and there's that small paragraph that we're putting in. Any, anyone else? Mr. Perrier.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Costa.
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
And I think that covers our agenda, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:48 PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Perrier, did you call Ms. Costa and I in different orders all the time to keep us on our toes?
I keep you on your toes. Wanted to.